Okay, it went live, so that's good.
Hi Betty.
Hello.
How are you Betty?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Love your hair.
Thanks. Have you got snow up your way?
Oh yes, a lot.
Same here. Enough.
Mm-hmm, enough.
With a capital E on the enough.
Hi Mary Kate.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi Mary Kate, how are you?
I'm great, how are you Betty?
Oh fine. Just a little skin in the yard, no.
Just a little bit more snow, right?
Oh, why not? Kind of a daily occurrence.
Absolutely.
But as they say, it's New England, wait 10 minutes, it'll all change.
Absolutely.
Evening everyone, how we doing?
Good, thank you.
Good, how are you?
Long time no talk Betty.
Yeah.
Good evening all.
Evening.
Hey John.
How are you?
Hey Mac.
Hey Mary Kate, I think that was Eric.
Hi Mac.
Is that Bill on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Hi folks.
Hey Eric, hey Bill.
You there?
I think we're still waiting for a couple more, Nanette, so why don't we just wait another moment or two?
Yes.
Hey. I think I'm counting eight right now, we're just, I think we're only missing Jeff, is that correct Nanette?
Yes.
I'm on the line.
Oh, great, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, welcome everyone to the last Monday in February, can't believe it, it is Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Nanette, would you please call the regular meeting, call the order for the Board of Trustees meeting?
Yes, Mary Kate Muirin.
Present.
Janay McDonald.
Present.
Elizabeth Posito.
Present.
Alexander Anderson. Vicky Kraus.
Present.
Eric Hagopian.
I'm here.
Bill Johnson. Maurice Lindsey.
Present.
Jeff Sattler.
Present.
And Max Starks.
Present.
Great, thank you so much. So, we want to look at the approval of minutes of our regular meeting of January 25th. Do I hear a motion to accept the meetings, minutes?
Bill Johnson, motion to approve as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, it's Betty.
Thank you Betty. Discussion. Hearing none, Nanette, could you call the role to accept the regular meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021?
Yes, Mary Kate Muirin.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Alexander Anderson. Vicky Kraus.
Yes.
Eric Hagopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. As we transition into the trustee committee reports. Trustee Starks, I have you with the Committee on Ways and Means of Monday, why don't we, sorry, do investments subcommittee Thursday, February 4th, first. Trustee Starks.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd rather just go in the order that is prescribed because we actually reviewed that as part of the Ways and Means, so I can kind of hit both. And I'm going to ask the Committee to bear with me because we had a lengthy meeting, so I'll try to get through this as efficiently as possible and hit the high points. So we started our discussion with a brief overview of fiscal year 2022 budget discussion, and preparations are underway. And, and the first draft of the budget will be presented at the Ways and Means Committee meeting in March, so that, that, that's good. We then transitioned to a new federal funding source, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, that will provide $8.1 million for STCC to draw down on from January 2021 through January 2022, and possibly through September 2022. Approximately 2 million of that 8 million is for, will be for student aid, and 6 million to defray COVID-related costs and approved student support activities. We then had a discussion on SECCE investments, where Dr. Cook raised funding for the building 20 relocation and capital project, and the possibility of trustee approval of reserves to support the required certify study, as well as a portion of the total project funding. We then turned to capital projects for fiscal year 2022, which is approximately $4.8 million, 3.1 of which is for facilities, and 1.7 million for information technology. We then had a CARES Act summary discussion and uses in fiscal year 2021. The combined award amount was 4.75 million, of which 4.2 million has been spent or encumbered. The remaining 531,000 was discussed, including further avenues to support needs, and a no-cost extension can be requested. We then turned to more of our traditional fiscal year budget detail, and, and we, we had a normal fiscal year 2021 budget detailed discussion, starting with our cash flow projection, whereby we have approximately, Rush City College has approximately $6 million available at TD Bank, with, with a decline of 19% in enrollment for spring. The projected year-end balance at TD Bank is about 900,000. With a 25% decline in enrollment, we would actually leave us at 400,000, so, so it was good to see a, a, not only what we projected, based upon what we're seeing for a decline, but what would it be if we had a, an assumption for even greater decline. We concluded the fiscal year 2021 budget detail review with as expected revenue and spending report, facilities and project, and second quarter trust fund and vendor expenditure reviews. And we concluded the meeting with an investment subcommittee update from the meeting on February 4th. Again, I gave that, that update as the Chair of the Committee. The highlights of that meeting essentially are Mr. Chase providing us with an update on the actual merger between DeMeo Snyder and fiduciary investment advisors. The combined entity is worth, is managing about $200 billion in assets, and the actual merger is, is actually went smoothly, with no, with no material hiccups, which is, which is fantastic to hear. We're, we're getting, we got good service from fiduciary investment advisors, and it looks like the combination merger with DeMeo Snyder's, that, that's continuing, particularly with, with Mr. Chase continuing to service our account. Total STC investments managed by DeMeo Snyder now total $17.9 million as of December 31st, 2020. The long-term investment portion of that is 12.9 million, and the short-term portion is 4.9 million. The long-term performance for the quarter beat benchmark at 12% return versus a 10.3% versus the benchmark. And full year to date, 18.4% versus 15.9%, so a strong performance there. And on a short-term performance, while we're not looking as much for returns, anything, we'll take anything. Our quarter was 0.4% versus the benchmark of 0.2 in fiscal year to date, 0.8 versus 0.4. So the performance of the portfolios is, is, is strong. The management of the portfolio from our provider, DeMeo Snyder, is excellent. We talked about, you know, constantly monitoring the account and, and making changes or tweaks where, where needed, but also following our, our overall philosophy, so, so good story there. That's my update, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you so much, Trustee Starks, much appreciated. Do I hear a motion to accept the Committee on Ways and Means meeting minutes of Monday, February 8th, 2021? Which includes the invested subcommittee?
Motion to accept.
I think I heard from you Jeff initially?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Vicky Kraus, second.
Great, thank you Vicky. Discussion. Hearing none, Nanette, would you please call the role to accept the Committee on Ways and Means, Monday, February 8th, 2021, which does include the Investment Subcommittee meeting minutes of Thursday, February 4th, 2021?
Yes, Mary Kate Muirin.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Alexander Anderson. Vicky Kraus.
Yes.
Eric Hagopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So, old, old business. We all know that we were part of the NETI accreditation and talking about our projection as a Board of Trustees, and part of that was for us to really look at our shared governance model. So, starting in March, the All-Unit Congress, AUC leadership, will be on, have an agenda item on the Internal and External Relations Committee meeting. As you all know, that committee is chaired by Trustee McDonald. And so, we will make sure that we get in touch with AUC, the leadership, see what is on their agenda, what they want to bring to the committee, and have that, that conversation. This is one step, as we all agreed in, for our accreditation, in shared governance. Just one small piece, right, of one of the projections that we're going to be moving forward in the next few weeks, months, and years, to better establish the shared governance model. Dr. Cook, did I miss anything from that perspective?
No, again, we, we have done well by this in the past. I think obviously we've been intending a little bit with some of the COVID dynamics, but March of last year, Internal, External also hosted the leadership from the All-Unit Congress. I myself have made sure to pick up a monthly meeting with leadership from administration and leadership of the All-Unit Congress, so the conversations certainly continue in earnest. I also know in terms of all these layers of engagement with our different stakeholders. We have an academic plan that's been developed with an incredibly cross-functional representative group of faculty and staff, and the All-Unit Congress has been prompting their membership to take a look and review of that. So, so there's really some good work being done on that front.
Great, just wanted to ask Trustee McDonald if you had anything else to, to add?
Nope, I just, you know, look forward to the agenda item that they would like to bring to the committee, and, you know, working together for shared governance.
Great, thank you so much. I think it's a great step forward as we continue, there's always continuous improvement. I know that whether you're higher ed or business, whether it's private or public or corporate, there's always continued improvement, so looking forward to that. Transitioning into new business with the NETI accreditation visit of April 11th to the 14th. Dr. Cook, my understanding now, everything will be online, so if you can, that's my understanding, if you could talk through a little bit more of the details with us?
Happy to. So, Mary Kate and I had heard from legal counsel. What we know is typical is when a visiting team comes to a college, they like to meet with trustees. We had talked to them about what are the implications from open meeting law? Obviously, we are still virtual and remote this way. And legal counsel affirmed that it's still subject to open meeting law. And when we then talked with the commission themselves, what they said is, well, just try to piggyback on something you may have available. So, where we landed is that Monday, the 12th, everyone, there is a Ways and Means meeting. So what we'll be sure to do is make NETI and the visiting team an agenda item at the end of that, and we can invite all of our trustees to be there, and that's how we sort of get it all together in one forum. So that's, that's the sort of signature piece, if you will, where, where the visiting team will have a chance, the chair will have a chance to ask trustees questions there. But further than that, it's also very typical that the chair of the visiting team, again, his name is Dr. Richard Hopper, he's President of Kennebec Valley Community College in Maine. He typically, they typically meet with the chair of the board, so we expect that Mary Kate will also have a sit-down with the chair. We also are trying to set up to make sure all the elements of trustee engagement are there, is to see, would the visiting team like to meet with our chair and vice chair? So, both trustee Muirin and trustee McDonald together. Also, maybe internal, external, so we would have Betty as the secretary and Janay as chair of internal, external. So we're trying to make sure that there are these multiple forms over those days, where there's this trustee engagement. Again, with the signature form being Ways and Means that Monday night, and then these multiples over those other days.
So, Dr. Cook, is there any pre-work that would come prior to that, the meeting on the 12th, that you'd want us to review as, as a group, so we're better prepared, or?
I mean, I hate to say it, it is all there in the self-study.
Yes.
But that is a 100-page document.
It's 106, I think our, our two wonderful co-chairs got that down to 106.
Just a little light reading for you all at night, but, but remember, they're really looking to you to say, you know, here's what I should, Betty and I had a chance to talk earlier today, again, in her role as secretary, and trying to help with some of these logistics. By and large, having been a member of these visiting teams, they ask trustees about fiscal matters. They're they're going to have conversations with you about all of the fiduciary elements, by and large, is where they tend to live and breathe. Not so much into details around, well, how how is cash flow going or things like that? So I'm not expecting any wild cards, quite honestly. And it it also means it's not like you have to feverishly come up to speed on some of these things. That's why you have an administration. That's why you have shared governance bodies and faculty. Those are all stakeholders and their voices will be sought out by the visiting team as well.
Okay, great. So I know that we already have that meeting who are members of the Ways and Means. But Nanette, maybe if you can send to everyone as a separate meeting, just so everyone has that on their calendar and can put a hold, it's going to be pretty important. Maybe even expect that, right? Trustee Starks maybe to go a little bit longer. That day, depending on the agenda of Ways and Means that month. Probably, would that be, Mac, would that be the first potential review of a budget? Or Andrea, can you answer that?
I think it's going to be the second review. But yeah, I was going to recommend to extend extend the time, maybe half an hour with a separate meeting. That way is on our calendars. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
And we could certainly, with a little bit of time in the plane, we can certainly talk about, is it best to put it on the front perhaps? And that allows us to have the budget conversation afterwards, right? Or go the other way. Certainly, we we can, we can do what what the pleasure of the board is.
Yeah, I think so, Mac. Why don't we talk to see what's best for your schedule and kind of that flow? And kind of that timing?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, for, okay, we'll talk. All right.
But we'll defer to you for sure.
Yep.
Whatever you you want to do.
Yep.
Great. Dr. Cook, anything else for the the visit?
No, that's really it. Again, it's it's hard to put a fine point on. This was one of my my items under the perspective. It's hard to put a fine point on. Like, this happens once a decade. I mean, that's that's a pretty rare occurrence. I'm so grateful for your investment. I I can assure you, you have much to be proud of for the institution level of investment in this process. It's not just an outcome. It's not just a report. There's a tremendous amount of thought that has gone into trying to get our hands around who we are now and who we anticipate and project ourselves to be. That's really what this visit is. Is us sharing with this visiting team how we see ourselves. It's it's a wonderful fruitful process that I think will help us really trampoline off into that that strategic planning process that we expect to come on the other side of this later in the fall.
Great. So I keep going, Dr. Cook. We're going to transition right into your perspective.
Yeah, let me jump in. So greetings from campus trustees. Again, I I wish now next month represents truly a year where we sat there and we said, are we really going to go remote? And it's been a remarkable twelve months in that sense. If you hear noises behind me, our snow team is on campus clearing the pathways. It is a campus that does still need its TLC and it's maintaining. Had a very fruitful town hall, all college town hall earlier this month. About a hundred and seventy, maybe a hundred and seventy five employees across the college tuned in for it. We did record it and we have it in our portal for for employees who couldn't get there. Honestly, the 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 most prominent question was, what are we doing for fall? And of course, the response is, in particular, when we know what the gathering size will be and how well vaccination distribution is. And we're sort of, again, still at that mercy of those two factors. Nevertheless, we know come April, we will open registration for both summer and fall. And so we are going to do our best, even if we know we can't be on campus or plan to be on campus as much as we would want to. I can tell you the goal, fully back on campus, utilizing all of our spaces and specialized equipment. But again, we're up against these two unknowns there. A few other years, we talked about accreditation. Let me give the board an update on program reinstatement. Legal counsel and administrators have met with M triple C, had that conversation. And so we are prepping faculty recall notifications in line with the collective bargaining agreement. So that work continues in earnest. Obviously, we talked with legal counsel about the the union aspects of this. We also have a meeting with the Department of Higher Education to work on rescinding and pulling back the teach outs of these five different programs. And so we're going to be working with them on that. If there's something surprising or unusual about that, I'll be certain to inform the board. But there is a administrative function that we do need to attend to with the with the Department of Higher Education. As I mentioned, April is really important because that's when we launch the schedule. And I and I can tell you, there are going to be institutions that will say we are going to be open. But that may mean the best that they can promise at that time is students can come back and stay in a dorm. But they may be on a laptop come fall. So all that is to say, we have our work cut out to market what we have to offer, not just with the program and the relaunch of these of these five, but all of our programs to to our prospective students and our current students. So we're definitely working on the schedule and the marketing and really trying to think about not just those high school students. And it's a bit of a question mark right now about how well those twelfth graders will persist and get through to graduation this year. But adults, adult learners and them, not just the online piece, but what can we offer to them in the late afternoon and evening? Because they have jobs during the day. That is all a great deal of consideration and we're going to try to put some dollars behind making sure people know what we're offering. Let me step to and segue to the budget. Obviously, a lot of moving parts, both in terms of seeing through this year and prepping for next year. I think to trustee Starks, trustee Mary Kate's sort of view on this work. We're we're going to have a wonderfully robust process yet again. The finish off this current year. So you've seen the the sort of the the bounds, if you will, down ninety percent this spring and down twenty five percent. We're probably going to land somewhere in the middle, actually. Right now, with a second half of this semester option for students, we're trending down about twenty two percent. So I don't think we're going to hit that mark of nineteen. All that is to say, you heard the margin, we're going to be able to absorb those further losses that way. As a as a as a benchmark, some of the language out there, there's a lot of community colleges in the in the U.S. They're the ones who have taken this endemic on the chin. Fifty percent of all the U.S. community colleges are down double digits, ten percent or more. Here in Massachusetts, we're probably on the slightly higher end. In this case, where last fall we were sixteen percent and we're going to maybe be around twenty one, twenty two percent this fall. But unfortunately, it's that kind of company that we're in where it is community colleges. So there isn't anything sadly that is unusual or untoward about our predicament. It is unfortunately common for all of community colleges. When it comes to finishing off this year, we've got, as we discussed, that Ways and Means, about a half million dollars of CARES Act that we're still trying to figure out how to best apply that. You know, what I wrote down is we have competing needs and a difficult capital timeframe. You you can imagine, we have lots of facilities projects, lots of IT projects. But they take a long time sometimes, particularly because of the certified study nature of what we're obligated to see through. So we're trying to work on that. And certainly, we're going to make sure that we we get those dollars spent. Segue to fiscal year twenty twenty two. Yep. So next March is the first draft of that budget. We're going to start bringing in key key guest speakers, if you will. So Deb Avery, our senior director of facilities, is going to come and talk to that committee. And she's going to share some really specific details around the projects we have teed up for next year. So trustees feel confident about what's that three point one million going to get us and how are we using DCM one? At the risk of sharing more sticker shock with you, two key things to already mention to you, and we will be very clear when we have more information about what this means. You've heard us talk about challenges with the campus green and the lead in that green. And how we can't have children but for one specific area utilize that, right? We have a third party that has a childcare center on campus. We just learned through some further testing that there is arsenic in the green as well. And we may not allow, is likely, we may not allow the childcare to have children anywhere on there. So we went from bad to worse. And this, again, is the inheritance, unfortunately, from being a former manufacturing site. I've already reached out to the National Park Service. Kelly Felner is the superintendent there. She and I get together every once in a while. This would be a pretty great project to get some federal assistance on. So stay tuned for that. That's a concern. Here's the sticker shock. In our campus master plan, we had a number of moves attached to us moving over into the learning commons. One of them is relocating the our campus police. They're kind of stuffed into one of those small buildings. If you were to walk from from Garvey Hall to the learning commons. We knew we wanted to relocate them and have them have appropriate space. In our five year capital plan, they were written in for one point seven million on that move. We just got back the estimate, seven million dollars. And again, we are subject to public procurement, public certified study work, all this. We are at the mercy of that. What we're going to do is check and find out how, what went into that. But this is, this is how and why it's hard sometimes at the college is all of a sudden, there's this escalator on these different projects. So bear with us. We're going to talk more about that. Deb Avery will be able to provide specifics around the status of that at the Ways and Means. But but that's problematic. I mean, we have so many competing needs and to see a project like that with campus police elevate that way is is quite concerning. On on the equity front, this is as vital consideration and conversation for us as any. Certainly is there with broadly the board and Department of Higher Education. I had a chance to meet with our consultant, Dr. Pamela Felder Small, who has been doing some great work with our AIA, our Anti-Racism and Inclusion Alliance. One of the things I wanted to sound out already is I've been working through Denise Hurst, our VP of Advancement and External Affairs to engage our foundation for some underwriting. One of the things that we're looking at is trying to build a fellowship model, where we would potentially elevate a faculty member. Serve almost like a member of cabinet for a year and work on a specific project, ideally with an equity focus that really helps bring some systems change for us. One of these areas, we've not necessarily talked about it here, but we'll be doing so with our internal external committee, is this idea of developmental math, developmental reading and writing. We have a lot of students who have a high school diploma, right, where they have a GED, the high set. They come, they don't necessarily have some of these opt out things like a certain high school GPA and we're obligated to assess them. It pushes them into what's called pre-college math or English. And then they languish. And there's lots of models out there where community colleges have really reformed that work. We could potentially draw on that, create a fellowship and really get some movement with the help of faculty on that. So stay tuned on that. I'm having some conversation again with the foundation to potentially help underwrite, underwrite that fellowship for a year. Lastly, some unfortunate news. Somebody who did not join us tonight, Steve Grande, he has written to the governor, to Mary Kate, to myself. He has opted to resign his position as trustee. This is not a surprise. I've been talking with Steve for a while during the pandemic, like many, many people. He's really needed to assess and examine priorities and he knows he just doesn't have the bandwidth and capacity to serve as a trustee now. So he hung in there as long as he could, but he has issued that resignation effective now. So we will have that vacancy and it and it does impact us, not only because he's an all around great person and he brought a manufacturing perspective, I think, to a lot of our conversations and a and a continuity. But we will have a quorum still that contends with that vacancy. So I appreciate, we're a board, I I hear from my counterparts sometimes that they struggle with trustees getting qualms. But I'm just wanted to put that out there, but I I'm not anticipating that because of how often and readily you all show up for these different meetings. So so please know that, again, it's like all of you, it is a governor appointment. And so we'll see what comes from that. And it and it does take a while. It does take a while to happen. Let me leave you on a on a good note and then happy to take questions that you may have. On the workforce side, I mean, you could argue everything we do at the college, right, is workforce and it's focused. But for that division that focuses on some of our non credit and industry and employer specific training. We are offering a house flipping training. And it capped out at twenty registrations. So just a little bit of sort of bright new silver lining to everything in this in this day and age when there's still uncertainty and that we can actually create this this training with great thanks to one of our full time faculty members in architecture and building technology. Jen Ford, I think, is our trainer for this, who was hosting this. And it's a, I think it's a real win. It shows, again, a certain responsiveness to the institution, to to the industry needs. I wanted to kind of land there with some great news. So I appreciate it to Dave Benora, who I see, who is our assistant VP of workforce, who also with his team helps us. So I'll set it down there, but happy to take questions.
Betty, I heard, I think I heard you trying to chime in before for Dr. Cook. Did you have a question early on?
When I heard the seven million. But back to the green, because I was thinking about that and and now we find that we have more buried there. Would that have to be like dug out and disposed of and brought to wherever they bring this stuff? That's what happened?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. We've had a little bit of experience. The the term, believe it or not, it's a technical term, dirty dirt. Dirty dirt, when it's contaminated like this.
Okay.
When we added the K lap parking, so if you go down Pearl Street, we added that parking lot there again. It's been some years in the rearview and it's pretty significant for us. That soil was also contaminated. If I recall, we actually worked out with the state and with DCM, the ability to utilize it as fill. So we didn't have to truck it off campus and pay it a a an elevated disposal. There are many permutations of this issue with the green. There are potential ways where you can treat it on site and not have to remove it. All the way to, yes, you have to sort of take X number of inches off the top, truck it off and replace it. So this is why early estimates from just when the green was dealing with lead range from six hundred thousand to two point five million. And again, this is have, this is have a green where the community can actually walk on. To now add the arsenic piece, I'm not quite sure, of course, the state's going to make us do certified studies on this. So the the sticker on this just started going up again.
So so, John, if I could just chime in. Because it's a, it was a, you know, a national defense facility and so forth. And the and I'm sure the arsenic got there through the plating processes that they were doing on the armory. Is there any, you know, is there federal money that is available to fix this?
Yeah, so the, because we've been talking with National Park Service, that's our best door right? Right, is to see if they have access to some monies. It doesn't have Brown's Fields designation, so we aren't necessarily able to quickly go to that type of an approach. And obviously, we're decades in the rearview. You know, I don't know. People sometimes sue the federal government, right, when they're left with these types of things. That would obviously just prolong this by years. I can tell you, our congressman will likely be as helpful as can be. But of course, there is no earmarking right now anymore at the U.S. Congress. So it would be hard for us to advocate for an approach like that. What we know is Richie Neal is keen as the chair of Ways and Means to bring infrastructure forward. Again, that's a hope right now and until we see some movement on that. But we're going to be sure to reach out to his office to be sure he knows about the latest. Absolutely. But I think if we had to sort of take some some realistic hope on this, it would be working through the National Park Service.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about the, you know, way it is, if I if I disposed of or otherwise leaked hazardous material onto my property, my business. And then I sold the place for whatever reason, they didn't pick it up or whatever. I don't get to go, that that doesn't go away. You know, so whoever did the dumping is responsible. So anyway, I'm not sure how it is. The federal government seems to get away with a lot. But but in this case, you know, it's definitely something that has to be remediated.
Why I asked was, Westfield has a lot of old factories, places that had fires and things like that. And when they wanted to rehab, rebuild, all of a sudden, when they started digging, everything was like halt. And it turned into mega bucks. So. Wow. And one other, just maybe minor, it says here that NETI is April eleventh through fourteen. The eleventh is a Sunday. Is that when they show up for brunch or?
Yeah, yes, it is. Trustee Alex Fesposito. Typically, yes, they would come in for a dinner. And you would host, you know, in some form or fashion. And you would, you would host, you know, in some form or fashion. Um, you, you should get a chance to try to, you know, um, warm them up to the unique and wonderful qualities of your institution. And now we have to do it remotely. So we have a little bit of a sort of gathering for them, try to keep it short. Um, we send them essentially like a care package in advance. We, hard copy of that hundred and six-page document. And also with some things, like we sent them, uh, uh, we're going to send them some of our swag, right, some of our stick stuff. Um, but also even like a pair of socks from a local maker that has the Springfield skyline on it in the Hall of Fame and things like that. So you try to give them a sense of presence. Who is this institution? But yes, it does, it does start for some of us on Sunday.
I was wondering, I thought, geez, I haven't heard about Sunday yet. So, okay.
You're going to have, Betty, you're going to have to have extra, um, you know, uh, skills, right? Yeah, online for sure, when we can't do it face to face.
Betty, you're bringing the sweet potatoes.
I'm going to send out, as secretary, I will send out a memo and I'll put a sign-up sheet.
That's awesome, Betty. Any, any additional, uh, questions for Dr. Cook?
I, you know, I, I, one more, uh, and that would be relative to the, to the police, uh, the moving of the police station. I mean, the seven million dollar number is frankly insulting to the, to, to me and probably to the rest of the board. Uh, it's ridiculous. And so, I mean, I just built an entire new factory. That's, you know, probably ten times the size of anything that they need for less than half of that. So I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So, you know, the whole public bidding process, I get it. But is that a license to steal? I mean, that's what it feels like.
I, I'm hearing bits about this. One of the things that may have added to the escalation and, and I, you know, I, I know it's painful for all of us. There may be something and we need to find out, is this a federal regulation or a state regulation where if in fact we move that it, this facility may have to be, um, I forget the term exactly, but like basically like earthquake uh, survivable.
Well, yeah.
We're going to find out. I promise you, at Ways and Means, we're going to unpack this and find out what in the study said, what's the reg that means we have to live up to that standard, right? Because obviously, when you get into these buildings, that means all kinds of footings have to be poured and what have you, things like. Uh, it's rocking a hard place though, right? Because.
Don't move them. That's right, Eric. They, then they don't move. That's right.
Simple, really.
Yep.
I, I think that the rock in the hard place, I'm not truly, don't, and we're not going to take my word for it, we'll, we'll bring in the chief of police. Is he's likely going to help make the case for why that may also be untenable.
Wow.
Work through the discussion.
Yep. So, ending on that note, let me transition into my chair report. And I just have one, uh, a little bit leftover business from last meeting is as part of the accreditation and, uh, a part of our commitments moving forward. We talked about, um, reviewing the bylaws and doing some enhancements and also really getting to really understand and put some mission statements around the committees. So, um, I am going to ask, I'll send an email, um, just see if we can get some volunteers, would be great. Probably just a small working group, a couple. Um, so if you have a little bandwidth, I'll ask if someone, you can just give a little bit of time. It won't be, you know, a, a ton of time, but I think it's important for all of us to review those. So, Nanyan, if you could send the bylaws to all of the trustees. And if they can't participate in the small working group, maybe they can just send in, um, to Nanette or to my, and/or my attention to some of your thoughts and then the team can put it together. And then the idea is for us, once we have a working document to, to share with others, uh, to make sure that we have, um, a complete document, something that really outlines the important work that we all are doing. And so we have a better understanding what those bylaws are. So, um, that, that's the only thing I have on my, my report. Any, any questions, comments? Happy volunteers for the last Monday of February. First person that smiles, that was you, Eric. You're a volunteer. Nice. Okay.
Okay.
Um, well, no, we'll, uh, we'll send out some information and you can send it in written form. Um, so, uh, that's all I have for my report are the date of our next board meeting is Monday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Nanyan, do I, do I hear a motion to end the board of trustees meeting?
So moved.
Uh, Vicky, do I hear a second?
Second.
Eddie's a second. Discussion, none. Nanyan, would you call the role, please?
Yes, Mary Kate Mearon.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Alexander Anderson.
Yes.
Vicky Kraus.
Yes.
Erica Gopian.
Yes.
Bill Johnson. Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Please be safe if you're traveling. There's a little ice and snow on the roads and then we'll see you real soon. Take care. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.